All right, Van, by my watch, it's three o'clock. And, uh, Van, oh, Patricia, I see you. Why don't, uh, Van, why don't we go ahead and call roll?
Mr. Chairman, I have a roll.
Okay, Jim, if you want to call roll, I appreciate it.
And I'll be, I'll be guiding us through the regular business items.
Okay, all right, Jim, thank you. All right, if you'd call roll.
I have, uh, Cara Boyd Connors. Mark Wilson.
President.
Yeah, if y'all can respond when, uh, Jim calls, uh, your name, I'd appreciate it.
Here.
Kristi Ains.
Here.
Patricia Blick.
President.
Pat Hayes.
Here.
And Tommy Majors.
Tommy, are you there? Okay, well, we still have a quorum. I don't know, is Tommy in the queue?
Mr. Majors here on mute.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he is in, he is in attendance, he's just muted.
Okay, uh, and I understand Dexter may be joining us?
That was his indication.
Okay, with that, uh, I got clear quorum, uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Has anybody, uh, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, Patricia.
Second the motion.
Second mark, uh, any further, any discussion on the minutes? Uh, Jim, would you call a roll on the minutes?
Cara. Mrs. Boyd Connors.
Yes, I, I, I guess yes. I didn't hear a second, did we say a second?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Patricia has seconded.
Okay.
So we're just I or no, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I or no on the minutes, uh, whether or not, uh, you want to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Yes, I.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson.
I.
Ms. Ains.
I.
Ms. Blick.
I.
Mr. Hayes.
I.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I don't see anything under old business, although we have a couple things under item E, other business. So unless anyone recalls any old business we haven't dealt with, that's not reflected in, uh, in item E, you know, I'll go ahead and go past that and go on to new business. Uh, the way we're gonna go ahead and conduct this, if I can, is, uh, I'll first call on, on staff, on the five items, and then I'll ask any commissioner if they want to make any comments, and then I'll ask anybody in the public if they want to make any comments, and we can go in, in that order. Now, I know, I understand we've got a reasonable amount of folks that are, are in that public category. Uh, and so, uh, if, uh, you know, if, if you could indicate if you want to speak, uh, on any item, uh, please state by your name, uh, and that way, then I can, you know, try to do the best I can to control that, uh, based on who, who all might want to speak. So with those introductory comments, uh, let me, uh, ask, uh, staff, uh, Jim, if you'd go to C- Coloper, subdivision lots one R and three R final plat.
Uh, Dexter Doine has joined the meeting.
Oh, hey Dexter. You may be on mute, so hello. All right, Dexter's part of the, uh, board, uh, attendance, so with that, uh, staff on Coloper.
The Coloper subdivision lots one R and three R is a replat of two previously platted lots in extreme southwestern Palasque County. The reason for this replat is the owner of lot three or lot three R has constructed a portion of his driveway over onto lot one R necessitating a replat. The applicant has submitted all the comment, or the, all the items that staff requires, and staff's recommendation is approval as filed.
Any discussion by any commissioner?
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, this is Christie.
Yes.
I just want to make one comment, and I want to, I, I guess Mr. McClinton is not here. Um, but I, I would like to.
Yeah.
Oh, you are? Oh, okay, hi, Mr. McClinton, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, I want to thank you and Jim, because I think that you all have made a change to the plat application checklist that has made things a lot clearer for me anyway. Um, it looks like the column, there used to be two columns, uh, okay, I think, and no. And it looks like those have been removed and replaced with, um, either yes or non-applicable. And.
Christie, that, that, that is, that's, that's the standard final plat checklist?
Oh, it is, okay.
The preliminary plat checklist still has the boxes with yes and no.
Oh, it does, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, well, thank you for, you know, pointing that out. If I may, then, um, since I've opened it up here, I just want to mention that on that preliminary plat checklist, it's a little confusing to me because, as I had emailed Mr. McClinton, um, we talked about an example of Paradise Sally whereby the, uh, preliminary plat had, um, an okay marked where it didn't apply. There was a line item that didn't apply to the applicant, and it confused me. And, um, and so I just thought maybe having that changed also to, to be like the final plat, where it would maybe have a non-applicable column, because it kind of suggested the staff has received comments and has, um, approved of them, and it wasn't the case. And so I just wanted to make that comment, that I think it would be nice to have that change on the preliminary plat. So I'm sorry, I, I thought you had already made the change. Maybe that can be for another discussion for another meeting. So thank you.
Uh, you know, Jim and, uh, and Van, uh, you know, if y'all just take under consideration Christie's comment, I, I, you know, and then react to it on, on what you think may or may not be a problem to address that. Uh, and then if, uh, if there's a decision that the commission has to make, uh, that, uh, you and, uh, and, and Jim and Christie, uh, need to address, then, then we can bring it in front of the commission. But absent that, if Christie, if you would just visit with, uh, Van and Jim, and, you know, that may not take any board action.
Okay, okay, yes, I will, thank you.
All right, uh, any, any other comments, uh, on, uh, this first item, the Coloper subdivision lots one and three final plat?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mark.
I'm, I'm moved to approve as presented.
All right, there's a second.
I'll second that, this Dexter Doine.
Hey Dexter, uh, all right, there's motion made and seconded. I indicated I'd let the public, uh, if there is any comments on any of these, to make comments, uh, so I'll open it up to the public now. Does anybody in the public wants to make a comment, uh, or question? All right, next item is the Davis family.
We haven't voted.
We have to vote on it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's, oh, I'm, I'm rolling with things, so, but good idea, I appreciate the correct, or the, pointing out the error. So, uh, on the, uh, on the motion to approve, uh, Jim, if you'd call roll.
Uh, Mr. Doine?
Um, yes.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
I.
Mr. Wilson?
I.
Ms. Ains?
I.
Ms. Blick?
I.
Mr. Hayes?
I.
Mr. Majors?
I.
All right, motion carries. Uh, next item is the, uh, Davis family exclusion, uh, Jim?
The Davis family exclusion is a, a five lot family exclusion in north Palasque County. The applicant has submitted all the documentation that staff requires to recommend approval. Your write-up may have a, a note in there about, uh, legally described access easement. The applicant's, uh, engineer surveyor has provided that to staff, and the image you see there on the, the board reflects that, that, uh, survey with the included access easement.
Van, are you, uh, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, the, that was the only thing that was outstanding was the, uh, lack of an access easement. So the staff would recommend approval is filed.
All right, uh, do I have a motion for approval as filed?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve as filed.
Patricia Blick makes a motion, is there a second?
Christie is second, oh, sorry.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and take Christie as the second, that's, that's how recognized. All right, uh, any member of the public have any comments on this Davis family exclusion? Uh, Jim, would you call a roll?
Mr. Majors?
Yes, I.
Mr. Hayes?
I.
Ms. Blick?
I.
Ms. Ains?
I.
Mr. Wilson?
I.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
I.
Mr. Doine?
I.
Okay, uh, the, uh, third one is the Glenn Thomas addition, lots one and two final plat, uh, Jim?
This is a two lot final plat on Colonel Glenn Road, almost to the Celine County line, out of the Little Rock, uh, extraterritorial jurisdiction. The applicant has provided all the material and submittals that staff requires, and the staff's recommendation is approval as filed.
Any, uh, member of the commission, uh, have any comments on this?
I just want to thank the applicant for filing everything together and having it ready.
All right, note that, uh, appreciation to the applicant, uh, any other, uh, commissioner have any, uh, comments? Uh, any member of the public have any comments? On the motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, I mean, on the motion, Jim?
Well, we don't have a motion yet, I moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I tell you what, I am starting off good this day.
I moved to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right, second?
I'll second that.
All right, Dexter seconds it, uh, Mark, uh, made some motion, uh, Dexter seconds it. No further discussion on the motion, Mr. Jim?
Mr. Doine?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
You're muted, Ms. Connor.
I.
Mr. Wilson?
I.
Ms. Ains?
I.
Ms. Blick?
I.
Mr. Hayes?
I.
Mr. Majors?
I.
Motion carries, uh, next item is the, um, McCoy's Lakeside Edition tracks one and two final plat, uh, Jim?
This is also a two lot final plat in extreme north Palasque County. It's on a private road or a non-dedicated county maintained road. The applicant has submitted all the information required by staff, and staff's recommendation is approval as filed.
Let's go ahead and get a motion, uh, and then we'll see if there's any discussion, uh, on, on the approval of the final plat, uh, for McCoy's Lakeside Edition. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Mark Wilson and, and, uh, Mark, uh, Majors, uh, is, uh, makes a motion, and, uh, and Mark, like Tommy Majors makes a motion, and Mark Wilson seconds it. Uh, now any discussion by any board member? Not hearing any, any member of the public care to comment on this? On the motion, uh, Jim?
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Blick?
I.
Ms. Ains?
I.
Mr. Wilson?
I.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
I.
And Mr. Doine?
I.
All right, the last one in new business is the, uh, Peelochok?
Peoki family.
Peoki, Peoki family exclusion, Jim?
This is a one lot, uh, family exclusion on Zemansky Road in the Marche, North MacArthur Community. The applicant has provided all the information required by staff, recommend approval as filed, and that is our recommendation.
Okay, uh, before any, I'll open it for commissioners, I asked for a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Tommy Majors, uh, is there a second?
Second Cara Connors.
Cara, uh, Boyd Connors, uh, a second. Uh, now any discussion by any board member? Not hearing any on the vote, uh, Jim?
Mr. Doine?
I.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
I.
Mr. Wilson?
I.
Ms. Ains?
I.
Ms. Blick?
I.
Mr. Hayes?
I.
And Mr. Majors?
I.
Okay, uh, motion carries, uh, now we're on a roll, let's see if we can keep the potholes filled. Uh, uh, the next item is proposed subdivision ordinance amendment regarding the notification requirement. And, uh, it looks like to me there are two main decisions, uh, that we need to make. Uh, one is the, is, is, uh, subparagraph one of, uh, one dash one ten notice requirements. Uh, that, uh, uh, is, uh, presently six days notice, uh, or six days. And then, uh, there've been discussion about fifteen days and thirty days. Uh, let me go ahead and, uh, and, and suggest to the, the, uh, commission that, uh, you know, we take these one bite at a time. Uh, they're approximately, uh, apparent, they're about the same thing in terms of, of the timing, unless the, uh, uh, board wants to make a, a change in the days. Uh, let me, before I, uh, open it up to discussion, uh, staff, want to make any comments at this point?
Well, the staff's comment with regard to this particular aspect of the amendment would be to recommend the fifteen days as a adequate, uh, length of time. Uh, the six was short, the thirty's too long, because it's going to require us to have less meetings or change our meeting dates throughout the rest of the year and, uh, the years thereafter. So fifteen, we think is manageable and will allow us to keep our monthly meeting intact.
Uh, all right, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, and, and I know, uh, you know, I have a, a motion, uh, from, uh, any board member or any commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, change the ordinance, uh, that the applicant will submit proof, uh, of fifteen days' notice to the planning board.
Motion made by Mark Wilson, is there a second? Uh, Tommy Majors, is that you that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Mark Wilson, seconded by Tommy Majors, uh, that, uh, fifteen days, uh, be the new notice requirement, uh, uh, in opposition to presently six days, or at least recommendation to the, to the, uh, court. Uh, any discussion on fifteen days?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Christie.
Yes.
Um, I'm against the fifteen days, um, and I hope that I can prove that out here because of the way our new notification process is, it's going to make it real tight to do a, um, a fifteen day notification, so, um, there's no need, first of all, to change our schedule with a thirty day. Um, we can maintain our monthly meetings, and the developer can continue to submit projects on the same schedule, which is about the first working day of the month. And I, I worked this out, and it should be fine. And this is really how it should comfortably be with our new notification requirement. Uh, we have already agreed to last month, especially the, uh, postal service certified mail return receipt requested. I called the Roland Post Office to confirm their, their process recently. And just briefly, this is how that process would work. Prior to filing, the applicant is provided all they need to know online with a document entitled, "The Subdivision Application Process." And it has all, they have all the time in the world to properly complete the plat checklist to be placed on the agenda. And as it says on the application, the following documents are to be submitted at the time of the filing. And one of these is a completed checklist certifying that the required items are included. For example, provision for sewage, drainage, flood control, letters of approval from the ADEQ or ADH, et cetera. Fire, stormwater discharge plan, wastewater discharge plan is applicable. And they have time prior to filing to get a list of property owners in the thirteen hundred foot radius, which is the new requirement. Um, and we don't need to have soft approvals, by the way, I'm against those. So one of the reasons I think we are mandated to be here is to safeguard the process. So a fifteen day notification may not give enough time with the new changes, adding fifteen days for the return receipt requested USPS process. Plus, there's going to be six days proof of notice filing, there's hardly any wiggle room. And just stepping through it briefly using a fifteen day notice and the new approved changes. So day one, the applicant will file, sometimes this is the second or the third day of the month, because of how it will fall on the calendar, as the first working day of the month. Okay, so day one to three, now the applicant, um, choosing the certified mail return receipt method, mails and receives any non-deliveries from the post office. Certified mail return receipt requested process takes fifteen days total. So as mentioned, I called the Roland Post Office, and they said the following. They make a first attempt, five days later, they will make a second attempt. Ten days later, the sender will receive a letter back marked "undeliverable." This is approximately fifteen days' time to complete, to complete this process. So after day fifteen to seventeen, the applicant must file proof of notice six days prior to the public hearing. Prior to means not counting the day of the public hearing. So day twenty to twenty-two, at the earliest, the applicant is complete with the entire process of filing notifications. And if you look at our calendar for 2022, there are three dates that we meet on the twenty-second of the month, and two dates where we meet on the twentieth of the month. This doesn't even account for the days that the post service has, the postal service has to deliver the mail, which could be one or two days delayed, um, on the first mailing and the last mailing, uh, with a green card or the return letter back to the sender. So I think we have to go with thirty days, uh, since the applicant wouldn't always make the public hearing on the same, um, month as a filing anyway, um, with the, the fifteen day cycle plus, plus the six days prior to the public hearing, um, and even with the four days that we have now, um, notice to staff, it would be tight on the days when we have a public hearing on the twentieth of the month. So it builds in a process also to allow for the proper filing. The applicant will be sure to have all the information required, so there would not be any further delays. They cannot begin construction anyway without the plat being signed and certified first. So they are on hold until all the required documents are received according to subdivision code. And they can have a public hearing on the month following their filing. The business of the county is met, and we can continue to have our monthly schedule and filing date. So I, I also want to just say this, um, I think it's necessary to understand that the people in, uh, the property owners in the rural areas have a long time attachment to their land and their community, and it's handed down from generation to generation. For example, my land, we've owned for over a hundred years. And, um, it's a small ask to, to give these people thirty days on something that is going to impact sometimes their, um, their communities, their neighbors. It's a small ask, and I appeal to these board members to please think about this aspect. It's a human aspect. And, um, the urban areas are different, they don't have that kind of attachment maybe. And, um, it's adequate notice for fifteen days, but we're not an urban area. It's different, and we need to treat it differently. Um, so it, it will affect in a community in a profound way, and they need to know about it, to be able to absorb it and tell their neighbors and be able to comment on it. Um, so I, I hope that you will see that that is valued and that you also would appreciate this. If you lived in an area, if your land was handed down to you from your great-grandfather, like it was mine. So this, this is also our business, to care for how they feel about their property and community. Give them time to respond, give them input and feedback time. And I guarantee you'll learn things, as I have, um, that need to be known if you give time. Processes have been quickly pushed through this board, and we've been kept in the dark about many things. Someday I hope to tell you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that.
No, 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 I cannot be, I'm sorry. I am sorry, I cannot be interrupted.
Who, who has kept you in the dark? Explain that, please.
I would love to tell you, but I have not been able to tell you, because the county attorney has barred me from talking to you all about it. I so much want to tell you, and I ask you to ask the county attorney, Mark. I have so much to tell you, I would love to tell you right now. So the thirty days' notice therefore can work to resolve many issues about the plat before it's approved. So that, that is what I'm asking you all to consider is, is a thirty day, um, time period. A small ask for the people out in this area, thank you.
Uh, all right. Chairman, may I make a comment here?
Sure.
I feel like we're improving this situation as far as the time period of notice to the adjacent property owners, and this is a step towards more openness, more, uh, uh, notice. And, and I don't want to do, I don't want to make a major decision that, uh, will affect the conducting of the county's business, and it's a recommendation of the staff to go to fifteen, and that's why I make, make my, my motion. So I, I think it's a step in the right direction. If we, down the line, feel that it's inadequate, we can always change it later. But going too far and then trying to bring it back is, is a much more difficult operation, and that's the reason I made my motion, just so everyone's clear.
All right, I'm going to go back and forth, uh, with the, with the commissioners, uh, or board members. Uh, so, uh, uh, anyone that favors, uh, that opposes fifteen days, we'll get, uh, this address, and then we'll go on, uh, to the next item, uh, unless we, uh, have, uh, unless we don't have enough to support this motion. Uh, any, anyone want to speak in favor, uh, of the board, uh, the commissioners that, uh, are present in favor of the, uh, well, I guess opposed to the fif- uh, fifteen days, that would be the, uh, anyone opposed to the fifteen days, that's a commissioner or a board member, uh, please let me know, and you're, uh, I'll recognize you to speak. Okay, uh, uh, anyone, anyone want to speak, uh, on anything that's a commissioner or board member?
I'll just add, uh, for the record, um, Chairman, I believe the city's, uh, rec- requirements are fifteen days. Um, I do understand Ms., uh, Commissioner Ian's concerns, uh, thirty days is more consistent with, uh, legal requirements under the law, notice requirements. But I believe it would be fifteen is a median for both sides of the coin. We've got two competing interests here, and so for property owners, um, you know, that have not previously been given notice in that time period, or, or less than that time period, I think the fifteen is a happy median between, uh, both interests. So I, I'm, I'm supporting the motion, Mark's motion, to, to meet in the middle and split the baby at fifteen.
All right, do the Solomon routine, eh? Uh, okay, any other commissioner, uh, want to speak or, or care to make any comments? All right, on the motion, uh, uh, oh, well, any member of the public, uh, and I'd like to ask you to limit your comments if you want to, uh, make a comment, uh, so, uh, we can move on. But limit the time, uh, if you would, so any member of the public, uh, please, uh, speak your name.
Mr. Chairman, this is John Killingsworth, can you hear me?
Yes, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I had, I had asked of, uh, Mr. McDaniel to be able to, uh, give a short presentation on this subject. Uh, and unfortunately, he's not here, so I'm not sure whether you're aware that I'd have made that request of him.
No, I'm not.
Oh, I guess at this point, I'd like to.
Chairman, uh, we, we received notice of Mr. Killingsworth's proposal and his explanation in, in an email.
Okay, well, I. Okay, well, I'm I'm maybe it can, I think you might, if I remember now, staff forwarded that, is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted Mister Killingsworth to know that we we did get the information.
Right.
Thank you. I was just asking for uh permission to just briefly go through that before y'all vote.
Yeah, feel free uh to uh uh Mister Killingsworth uh and try to make it as as brief as you can.
Okay, Mr. Crainer, could you pull that presentation up?
Jim, is there uh, are you there?
Yes, I'm working on it, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, I had emailed you a an updated version of it just about noon today.
Why don't you go ahead and 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 start uh talking about it if you would? Uh, Jim, go ahead and work on trying to get that in front of us uh, uh, so we won't uh, we can move on.
Okay, uh, y'all are making improvements uh to the process, you're improving the notification process, you're developing a land plan. Land use plan and uh we're very glad that you're doing that. Uh, the public uh out here, we feel like we need adequate time to put our input into y'all's process. And thirty minutes, thirty days is really a bare minimum. Uh, the developer has been, has been mentioned earlier, developer has really all the time that's required on their part to develop their info. All the various requirements of the checklist, get those completed and submit them. Uh, see, I'm going to page four.
Yeah, if we get to page four.
Yeah, I'm working, I'll be there in just a second.
Okay, there we are.
Okay, so on this, on this page, once on the upper left-hand corner, once the signs are posted and and the letters are issued. The people out there really start with zero knowledge. Individuals, we have to obtain the information about the development, study the documents, see if we have any concerns, talk to our neighbors. Build a consensus and decide whether there's any kind of intervention that is really needed. As a group, we've got to select some leadership, raise some funds, possibly hire legal or technical experts. Uh, with environmental groups and governmental agencies that are involved. And then build a a strategy to inject our input to the public hearing. Research regulations, collect measures, et cetera, the strategy and come up with a with a. A uh set of information that is pertinent for the public hearing. Page five. Establishing the thirty day uh period would would provide balanced level playing field. Developer on the left, that process, there's no time limit. Process for the people, we start from zero knowledge, we don't know the process, we don't know anything about y'all's uh planning board. We have to start from nothing and try to get ready to find you input within a period of time. Thirty days is really not adequate, but fifteen makes it virtually impossible. On page six. The left side is just all the forces uh pushing for more development. Uh, on the right side is the the forces looking to restrain or to slow down and consider. Unity aspects and environmental aspects and really right in the center center of this page would be. Planning board, y'all are the ones that have to make that judgment, make the balance between the various factors here. And page seven. So as y'all establish new land use plan, all the improvements to the process. But at the same time, you don't give us adequate time, provide our input to the research we need to do. And to provide high quality information during the public hearing. It's really like buying a car with no engine, it it has no effect. For instance, in the future, if a developer comes in with a with a preliminary plat. Asking for a variance to the land use plan. And public has inadequate time to research it and provide good input on concerns. And that temporary plat that violates land use plan is approved. Those residents that live near that development. The land use plan and the notification improvements had zero impact. Else it didn't, the concerns were not addressed, else there was inadequate time. So y'all are about to spend a lot of time making great improvements. If you don't give us time to participate, it's no use or little use. Uh, on the page eight. So I'm just asking for you to vote no to the fifteen day recommendation and vote yes to the thirty, hopefully. Which will be nominated uh shortly on the page nine. This, this is just the meeting cycle. And I I may be incorrect here, this is my guesswork. Across the top, there's five steps in going from the submittal of the temporary at which is circle one. Circle two is the staff doing their review for about seven days. Circle three is the notification process, circle four is the public review, which is currently s- uh six days. And then circle five is y'all's uh planning board vote. In the center, current process is the way I look at it. On the first day of the month, circle one, developer submits the plat. For seven days for circle two, the the staff to review the information and let the developer know it's okay to go ahead and notify. Circle three, seven days for the notification. Circle four, six days for public review and circle five, vote in the same meeting. Now, under the, under the uh thirty day proposal with continuing with monthly meetings. At the bottom of the page, on the first day of the month, it's still the plat submitted, just as it is today in in the current process. Circle two, the seven day review by the uh staff, same, no change. Circle three, the notification process here is fourteen days compared to the current seven days. There are extra steps required, as Christie was mentioning, with the USPS uh US. Social Service having to do uh a a more lengthy process to get those signatures. And then circle four, the thirty days. At the end of that thirty days is next meeting. So basically, thirty day proposal with monthly meetings simply shifts the vote. Circle five in the middle page, it's certain, it shifts your vote from that meeting. The to the following meeting. And that whole process on the bottom of the page from the, from the time of the uh submittal to the boat, it's fifty-one days. As compared to the current, which is twenty days, so it's an increase of thirty-one days compared to the current process. Um, and then on page ten. Is uh on the right side, things highlighted there uh that length in the notification process. Uh, there's two signs involved, whereas none currently uh property owners within thirteen hundred foot radius versus adjacent property owners now. Uh, the certified mail with return receipt. And uh, I think that's the only major change, but those those things would take longer. So uh again, I I ask you to vote no to the fifteen day proposal. And I hope that someone will uh make a motion thirty and someone would second it and we'd get a vote in favor of thirty. And I appreciate the time to make this presentation.
Welcome, uh, any other member of the public care to make a comment, uh, please identify yourself and let's try to make it as brief as possible.
Mister Chairman, um, I have a, one of our uh neighbors had wrote.
I'm sorry, please identify yourself.
Chris Sennafani and uh Miranda Moore asked me to read something because she couldn't come to the meeting today. Would that be all right with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, it's not a book, is it?
No, it's not a book, I'll try to get through it as quickly as I can, but it's important.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, she says, uh, when a family or an individual has put their life savings into settling somewhere. And buying property based on the rural area, the community, this is where they want to raise their family. For the wholesomeness of moving to the country, whatever the reason, that is where they have chosen to live. For them, it's a forever thing. When a developer wants to come into that community and materially change the entire dynamic of that. At least the homeowner deserves is thirty days. It's a matter of respect, it's giving respect to the neighbors that will be living next to the new development. And to the community that has to accept a change they never signed up for. Voting on anything less than thirty days, you are telling those citizens of Paleski County. That basically what they think doesn't matter. I understand orderly and quality growth, the world, the word is quality in the first sentence of this planning commission's. Mission statement, but in order to get quality, you have to be scientific, methodic and thorough. For the community to be able to have this public oversight and feedback process. Don't you think they need an appropriate amount of time to be scientific, methodic and thorough? To make sure we get quality, if not, what's the point in it? And she says, thank you, and that was by Miranda Moore.
All right, uh, thank you very much, uh, uh, and now, is there any other member of the public that'd like to make a brief comment?
Uh, this is Lali Hony, I would just like to ask the downside of the thirty days. What is the downside of the thirty day period?
Uh, Mister Chairman, if I'm gonna make a comment.
Sure.
If, if the board uh chooses to uh consider the thirty days, the staff would say this. Um, we can do thirty days if we have forty, roughly forty-five day dockets. We can make it work, we don't need one docket spilling over into another's filing. That just makes it too confusing and too many opportunities for errors, especially with the additional notice requirements. So either we could maintain the fifteen days or if the board chooses to go for thirty days. That we will need to reduce the number of dockets or increase the length of the time between dockets.
Um, that means you can uh, you can approve fewer. Uh, proposals in that time period at at your meeting.
Yeah.
You say reduce.
Let me, as as a chairman, let me point out something, uh, you know, we are, you know, gonna vote on on Mark's motion. And then if there, if it is not adopted, we'll go to, you know, you know, another motion by a board member, uh commissioner. And uh, and so, you know, I think that was a question that was asked. Uh, the uh, the the second thing now is that, you know, we have a a companion uh decision that we need to make. But I want to point out and Van, correct me if I'm not wrong or if I'm wrong. Uh, that, you know, that we're gonna, you know, this will be open for a public hearing, a subject to the board. Uh, calling for one, uh, the commission calling for one. Uh, and that the public will be off, will get a second bite at this apple, even if we do vote for the fifteen or if we vote for the thirty. Uh, is that not correct?
That is correct, Mister Chairman, if regardless of what we end up with in this proposal. It uh, the board will need to hold a public hearing in a likelihood next month if they, if you make a decision on this today.
Oh, thank you, I understand.
So please, please be aware that uh, and this, this goes uh also for the resolution, that's also uh on the other business. Uh, items of the agenda, so, you know, while, you know, while we're opening it up for comments. That's not necessarily required at this meeting, but we are are because of y'all attending and and out of, and certainly out of courtesy to listen to to folks' thoughts. But there will be another bite at the apple, uh, if if whoever's unhappy.
Mister Chairman.
I'm sorry.
One comment, Mister Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, Chris Santafonte, um, I think that the thirty days is really necessary. To make sure that the planning commission has more time, so there aren't any more errors and everything is all together and is concise. And every, everybody has everything all at the same time and it gives you thirty days and there'll be less error. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, anyone else in the public and try to make it brief?
Mister Chairman, this is John Killingsworth again, I guess, uh, I don't understand uh from Mister McLendon's. Statement that one docket would cause problems by spilling over to the next docket. Um. It's a matter of delaying a vote from one meeting to the next. Would you elaborate on the problems would be caused by staying with thirty days with a monthly schedule?
Man, you want to make any comments?
Yes, Mister Chairman, um, if 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 you maintain a thirty day docket. As we have now, monthly meeting and you have thirty days notice, then you can never have a filing. Of an item on January the first and a hearing of the item on January the twenty-something. It's gonna have to be filing for January the first for whatever the February meeting is. Because they won't be able to get the notice in within the length of time. So you might as well just for all practical purposes, just go to how, if it's nine meetings a year to do the thirty day notice and that's what it is. Then each time you file at that docket you file for, you'll be heard at the end of it. But if you get your notice information in or any of the other information that is necessary to have it heard.
Mister Chairman, could I reply?
Uh, yeah, John, uh, but I'm gonna have to move on, so not more than a thirty-second reply.
Okay, uh, for the, the nine meetings a year that you had proposed, Mister McLendon. It's about forty days between meetings. And thirty of those days will be taken up with the public, I mean, period. A public review leaves about ten days. Or with the notification process and your staff's review of the data. And expanded notification process would be extremely difficult to accomplish within ten days. So. Yes, I respectfully dis- disagree that that process would be workable in in ethical terms. To only ten days for notification and your staff review that precedes the notification and the thirty day public um uh notice. Thank you.
Thank you, John, now, a- any, anyone else uh that would care to make a quick comment, uh, you know. But I want to underline the fact that whatever we decide, you know, that they were also in in my mind, gonna decide on, you know, holding a public hearing on whatever the decision is. Uh, and and defer the final decision until uh this is just putting the package together. Uh, and then the final decision will be made subsequent to the public hearing. Uh, any other comments?
Mister Chairman.
Uh, Mister Valdez?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's try a minute's worth, what, are you in favor or opposed to the fifteen days?
I'm opposed to the fifteen days in favor of the thirty days, I just have one question in regards to the standard. Says that the boy, if an applicant applies on the first, are they typically heard within that same month?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anyone else?
I do have, well, can I, uh, I guess with the public, you want me to wait till after the public comment is ended?
That's, Christie, I'd just as soon do that and then I'll come back, I'm gonna give Mark a chance to close on his motion, uh, uh. So any other members of the public?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
All right.
Uh, this is Kay Mutsiger. And I'm wondering, what is the big rush? It's, um. You're talking about making a decision that's going to have long-term effects. On a lot of people, on the environment, uh, potentially. Especially when you're dealing with rural areas. Uh, that's not that big a concern in the city. But in the rural areas. Like, for example, in this area, we've got a lot of land that's used for recreation. Uh, hiking, uh bicycling, uh bird watching. Things that in the city, you you're not concerned about. Uh, and we're concerned about environmental issues. Um, and we're concerned about environmental issues, the, the wildlife that are out here. You don't have to worry about, uh, I mean, we have, we even have black bears here in the Roland area. I mean, we're talking about poisoning wildlife. Uh, these are things you don't consider in the city and so why the rush when you could potentially destroy this whole ecosystem, which is also important for tourism? You know, the, um, as I understand it, the government, the governor, uh, is working to, uh,
Ms. Mutsiger, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to ask you to bring this to a close, uh, you know.
Okay, but just what's the rush when it, when it could have long-term, serious impact?
On the state.
On the state as well as area.
Let, let me just, let me just answer. I, you know, being a city person, you know, I, I, I built, when I was mayor, I built trails out uh, to connect with Roland. I, I mean, uh, so please understand that even though I live in the city, I'm extremely concerned about the, uh, relationship we have with the rural area. You know, I've pedaled out to Roland a number of times, uh, so I'm, I'm very concerned about the balance. And that's what I, I, I want to make sure you understand that, that that, uh, that that's, uh, something that I think all of us city folks care about, even, uh, when it comes to the rural area. That we, we enjoy it just as much as, maybe not quite as much as you're able to, but at a certain degree. So please recognize that, that those of us in the city do have a, a sensitivity to the, uh, rural, the, the beauty and the, the niceness of the rural areas.
May I make a comment here?
Yes.
This, this is not a urban versus rural
Right.
question. This is about the wise governance of the entire county. Well, particularly the unincorporated areas of the county. And to, to state that one board member, planning board member is pro-urban, pro-development, uh, this, this black or white is, is incorrect.
Wait a minute, Mark has the floor, Christie.
I'm sorry.
And to say that if, if somebody lives in the city or lives in the rural areas, doesn't, uh, it precludes them from making good decisions for the overall county is incorrect. And one should not make assumptions about where our opinions lie based on one particular subdivision, one particular issue. And I think our, our wisest course as a board is to make decisions in the best interest of the entire county and the entire citizenry. And I also add that developers are people too. And developers own property too. And so they have rights as well as the people next to their property. I own property in a rural area. I have opinions about what my neighbors can do. And I have rights as to what I can do with my own property. Those are two different things. And, and the people who want to place restrictions on what their neighbors do should be really careful about the restrictions that they put on, because they could very well come back to haunt you in the future. Mr. Chairman, we've got a, a motion and a second on the floor, and I propose we vote on it.
Well, first of all, I'm gonna give one other member of the public the chance to comment, and I'm gonna come back to the board, you know, for comments. But I'm gonna ask the board to save one minute or less, uh, and, uh, I want to bring this to a vote, uh, uh. But I'm gonna go ahead and one more member of the board. Anybody in the public wanna make, that hadn't made a comment before? Yes.
This is Scott Stupanrow. I've got, you have one brief comment, actually more of a question than a comment. It was posed earlier, a question brought up, asked of the board and the staff. What are the negative, negative, uh, aspects of thirty days? What is wrong with thirty days?
I'm sorry, but I really cannot understand. You must have a bad connection, uh, so I, I, it's, I don't know, if I'm having difficulty, maybe the remaining members of the board, uh, are doing the same.
Oh, Lali Honi, he's repeating my question of the downsides to the thirty days.
Okay.
My right, sir, my right, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, ma'am, you are. I only had one comment to the negative, and that's from staff about his docket.
Well, well.
Any other bad aspects about thirty days?
Let me, let me go ahead and, uh, and I'm gonna take Mark's, uh, uh, request as a motion, uh, uh, to, uh, uh,
Like to speak. I'd like to speak.
No, no, I'm sorry, Patty. I'm, I'm not, I'm, you know, there's a public hearing that's gonna be at the next meeting. Uh, if we, you know, if we, uh, if the board, uh, the commission does what I'm, I, I feel like it was almost required to do. So let me, uh, let me go ahead and come back to the board, uh, and, uh, and then Christie, I'll let you, I'll recognize you for brief comments. And then I'll let Mark close.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you just do, have a little figuring with me, fifteen days with a new notification plus six days, notifying staff comes to twenty-one. We're gonna have to change two of our meetings, one in September, one in December. It's gonna run right up against it. If Mr. McLendon says that we can do this thirty days, he just needs to change the docket cycle. I say, let's do this. It's doable. It's, it's win-win. We can still have our monthly meetings. As I understand, um, the, the applicant would just have to apply in the next month or have to show up in the next month. But the business continues of the county, that is blown out of the water. So same way with your monthly meetings, that's blown out of the water. And, um, it, it all can still work and the people can be happy. So, um, thank you. That was my comment.
All right, uh, Mark, you wanna close for your motion?
It's the recommendation of the staff to go to fifteen. I think it's an improvement over the six as far as property owners getting more notice, more time. And I, I just feel it, it's the most logical thing now. If we decide it's not sufficient in the future, we can extend it. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot easier to extend it later on than to jerk it back if we find that it's created problems. And it's my understanding, the city of Little Rock and, and other counties around us have fifteen. Is that accurate, Mr. McLendon?
Well, it's accurate on the cities. I can't speak to the counties.
Okay, well.
All right, Mark, Mark is closed.
Reason will step in the right direction.
Mark is closed for his motion, uh, on the motion to, uh, have fifteen days, uh, Jim, if you'll call the roll. And, and remember where I, for fifteen days, know if you wanna consider something else.
Mr. Doyne?
Aye.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Eames? Ms. Blick?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes?
Do I vote? Van?
You, you've been voting on everyone so far.
Well, I, I'm not gonna change that history then. Uh, I.
And Mr. Majors?
Aye.
Gracious.
Motion carries. Uh, now let's go to the, the next item that has to do with the sign. Uh, and that I believe is numbers, uh, number four, uh, and, uh, um, do you wanna go ahead and if you got that up, uh, in front of us, uh, it's number four. Uh, the, all properties involved in major subdivision applications or variance request application shall be posted with a physical sign of forty-eight inches by forty-eight inches. And I think that's an increase, isn't it, from what it is now? Van or Jim?
There, there is no current sign requirement.
Okay, no certain. So it, it, obviously it's an increase over no sign requirement. Uh, in the front property, visible from the street as well as on the closed principal arterial road at least, and then they go back to the six, fifteen, and thirty. Since there's no requirement, uh, you know, that, that obviously is a, an open decision by the board. Uh, and then it goes on to the signs provided by the staff and destroyed and et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the staff have any comments before I open it to the, uh, open it for, uh, uh, motion and discretion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the staff is, thinks it's, uh, not a good idea to post on the arterial and collector's roads, because the county does not want signs in the public right of way. To get a sign or any structure in the public right of way, you have to get a franchise from the court. Plus, if it happens to be the collector or the principal arterial or minor arterial that's close to the project, it is, if it's a state highway, they preclude it altogether. So some of the times you wouldn't be able to do it, some of the times you would, and only if you had a, a, uh, a, uh, franchise, there, there's issues of, of sight distance. And you don't know where people are gonna put things or how they're gonna put them there, because these four-foot signs are not small. They're, so they have a chance to preclude or inhibit, uh, sight distance. So we think it's probably a bad idea to, uh, post it at another location. If it's at the location, it's on our website, people get a notice, uh, of a, uh, of, of where it is and what it is, then they should be able to find it and figure out what it is, I would think.
So what staff is saying basically is that, uh, we really might have two things that we need to deal with. One, uh, is obviously the time prior to the public hearing. Uh, and the second would be whether or not we're gonna require one on the principal arterial road. Uh, and what you're saying is that, that, yeah, we, you know, we would have to get permission from a property owner uh, for the arterial road, uh, unless the corner is part of the, uh, uh, subject of the public hearing.
That's correct. If you, if you, if you put it, if you put it on, it's all gonna be on somebody else's property other than the applicants, unless they happen to be at that location. If they're at the location, then they'll have it on their own property and their own permission to do it. Otherwise, it's gonna be on the public property, which requires commit, permission, or on somebody else's property that requires permission. And it also potentially creates a sight distance issue.
Well, let me, let me suggest to the commission, uh, that, you know, we take up the first issue we take up then would be whether or not we're gonna require one on the principal arterial, recognizing that we cannot put it in the public right of way. So pending a, uh, an authorization by the court. Uh, and, uh, and, and so I guess that would be the first decision that we'd have to make. Uh, I'd like to, uh, you know, not only deal, I guess that would be the best way to deal with it as we, as I look at the wording. So, you know, let me open it to the board for a motion, uh, on that issue of whether or not, you know, we, uh, can require it on, uh, principal arterial roads, the closest principal arterial road, uh, recognizing the, uh, uh, the fact that we cannot put it in the public right of way.
This is Christie.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to, oh, go ahead.
Oh, well, Christie, you got to me first, so go ahead.
Okay. I think that sounds rather reasonable. Um, it, it makes sense, um, about striking that part, the closest principal arterial road, if it creates that much of a problem. And, um, so I would, I would make a motion to strike that part only and to accept the thirty days.
Uh, can we do it one at a time, Christie? I, I'll take your motion on thirty days, just right after this one.
Okay.
All right, let's, uh, let's make a, uh, I, I'll take Christie's motion as striking the art, uh, the language, uh, that says, uh, so it would read, uh, visible from the street and then strike as well as on the closest principal arterial road.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made. Seconded, is there any discussion on that by the, uh, by the commission? Uh, any comments by the public? Okay, on the motion, uh, Jim?
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Blick?
Yes.
Ms. Eames?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Aye.
And Mr. Doyne?
Aye.
Okay, motion, uh, motion, uh, that motion adopted, uh, which strikes that language on the principal arterial. Now, Christie, I'll take your second motion.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion to accept the thirty days, uh, prior to the Plasky County Planning Board meeting. That's the same amount of time that the little city of Little Rock has, by the way, for their signs. So that is my motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
On people.
Uh, not hearing a second, Christie, I'll say that. I'm sorry, who made that second? I'm sorry, who made that second? Please identify yourself by name on the, is it commissioner? I'm sorry, Christie. I don't, I don't know if anybody did that's a member of the commission.
That's okay.
Okay, well, not hearing any commissioner make a, a comment, uh, or a second. I'll declare that that motion a second. All right, now, uh, we have, the floor is open for a motion on the number of days prior to the Plasky County Planning Commission.
Can I make a motion, um, for the, well, strike that.
Okay, any, any board member, any commissioner?
If, if I may, I'm not ready to make a motion, but, uh, Mr. Chairman, but right now is, is number four even in the, in the ordinance right now? Is there something?
No.
Okay.
As I understand it, staff can correct me, but as I understand it, number four is not in existence at present.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's not a requirement that a sign be posted or?
There, there is no posted sign requirement currently in the world.
Okay, okay. So I, I think it would make the most sense. I'm not making a motion yet, but I'm asking for the opinion of the staff. Uh, Mr. McLendon as director, it would make the most sense for that to be uh, consistent with the general notice of fifteen days. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, we can, it's workable to do to fifteen. It's not workable to do thirty and maintain our current status.
Okay. Well, um, okay, so did we vote on the size? We bo- voted on the size and the, and then be on the prop at the front of the property, so that's the, so I, uh, I'm making a motion that the sign be posted fifteen days prior to the Plasky County Planning Board public hearing.
Uh, let me clarify things and staff, correct me if I'm not wrong, excuse me, Mark, for a call for a second. Uh, is that since this is brand-new, uh, language, uh, now, the, the only thing that's been decided right now is that we, uh, uh, take out uh, the, uh, uh, the indication of the closest principal arterial. Now, once we, you know, make decisions on item four, and we might be doing a little out-of-parliamentary procedures approach, uh, you know, to, uh, to do, uh, we will need a motion to adopt, uh, as we have amended it. Uh, so, uh, without trying to be, you know, confusing, uh, that, that motion will be to be followed. What I thought we would do and the way I approached it was that we would make any decisions on the language. And then, you know, we would adopt, uh, as amended, uh, item four, uh, assuming that that's what the board wants to do. So, uh, with that, I'll go ahead and take Mark's motion for fifteen days, uh, if there's a second. Is there a second?
I'll make, I'll second the motion that we have fifteen days of sign posting.
Okay, motion made by Mark Wilson, seconded by Patricia Black. Uh, all right, any, we're in discussion, and I'm gonna offer, uh, the commissioners, uh, the first bite at the apple. So any commissioner wanna, uh, you know, wanna speak?
I have a question, please.
Uh, just, that's Tommy? Yeah, go ahead. Uh, just, Tommy, yeah, go ahead.
Tommy Majors, yes, uh, are we talking about a four by eight sign put on the front of the property towards uh, for visible from the street?
Uh, forty-eight inches by forty-eight inches.
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, unless people, you know, I mean, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an assumption that, you know, that we'll make any decisions about this number four language before we move to adopt as that number four has been amended.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, because the only amendment now is taking out the closest principal arterial, uh, and then subject to Mark's motions, uh, seconded by Patricia. Uh, uh, we're in discussion by any board member. Okay, now I'm gonna open it to the public, but, uh, only, only, it max two minutes time. Any member of the public would care to talk or make a brief comments?
Well, this is Lali Hundy again, and I guess I ask the same question. Is there no, any reason not to put the sign up thirty days ahead of time? But prior to the county planning board?
Staff is already, Dan, you go ahead.
You know, the primary reason is because if you fight, you wouldn't have time to post a sign and meet the monthly requirement. You could not do it. Could not physically unless you put your sign on the property before you ever filed.
Okay, uh, any further comments or, you know, questions, uh, if you want, uh, but like I said, less than two minutes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Chris Senna, um, well, if, if, uh, Little Rock, uh, planning seems to do the thirty days and you seem to be following all the things that they do with the fifteen days, why isn't thirty days appropriate? I mean, you've already put the number of, of, um, of days to fifteen. Why not keep it at thirty like, um, the planning commission for Little Rock does?
Because they have six week intervals. We have, we have, we have thirty days or less.
Yeah.
Well, that's the reason.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the city of Little Rock does not require a sign for a subdivision application. It's only for zoning, conditional use permits and, I believe, variances.
All right, uh, not hearing any other comments and then let me underline again, uh, we're gonna have to have a motion to adopt as amended unless there's any other amendments that anybody wants to do to item four. Uh, and then they'll be calling a public hearing, uh, so there'll be another bite for the public at the, uh, at this apple.
Why?
I'm sorry?
Nothing. I'm sorry, I was, uh, reading something.
Okay, all right, uh, on the motion, Jim?
Mr. Doyne?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Hi.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Ms. Ains?
No.
Mr. Blick, um, Ms. Blick?
Sorry, I.
Mr. Hayes?
Hi.
And Mr. Majors?
Hi.
Motion carries, uh, now, let me again go back to, uh, my comments. Uh, is there any other, uh, language that the commission wants to address on item four? If so, I'd, I'd open it for a motion. If not, I'd open it for a motion to adopt as amended. Not hearing any, I'm open for a motion to adopt as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Dexter Doyne?
Uh, any discussion by any member of the board? All right, I, I think we've, you know, well, not to break the train, any, any quick comments by members of the public? All right, on the motion, uh, Jim?
Mr. Majors?
Hi.
Mr. Hayes?
Hi.
Ms. Blick?
Hi.
Ms. Ains?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Hi.
And Mr. Doyne?
Hi.
All right, motion's adopted. Uh, now let's, uh, go on to the second item in, uh, uh, in, uh, other business that has to do with the resolution to adopt countywide land use plan final draft.
Mr. Chairman, we still need to discuss item six of the proposed ordinance amendment.
Oh, okay, all right, that, well, uh, we'll see if we guys hit you on that, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, everybody look at item six, it reads the staff shall provide a form letter to the applicant for the applicant to complete and return to staff. Staff will post the form letter on the defendant's website at least blank days prior to the public hearing. Uh, I, I'd like to go ahead and see if we could do this in one bite. So I'd like a, a motion along with the days, uh, at the, I will take one motion to do both.
Mr. Chairman, please, uh, can we have the staff explain that item before we make a motion on it?
Sure. Uh, Dan or Jim?
What's the form letter? What's the purpose of it?
It's gonna state that there is an application pending before the board that we will post on the county's news webpage. Basically saying twenty acre lot, uh, or twenty acre lot, a twenty acre subdivision with thirty half acre lots, whatever it is, and we might put a picture or image with it too, it just.
So by way of explanation, that will be only on our website.
That's what item six refers to, yes.
Mr. Chairman, did we not already vote to approve that part or did we not?
Uh, I'll have to ask staff that. I don't think it was.
A- after listening to the minutes from last month, I, we did not reach a resolution on this because we wanted to make sure any time constraints were addressed by as many members of the board as possible.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, a- ask of Jim, if we're consistent with our fifteen days, is that still feasible for this letter? That doesn't upset that whole apple part?
A- absolutely.
Okay.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adopt, uh, uh, the item six with the days uh, indicated in, in that. I don't think there's.
I would like to make a motion to adopt item six with thirty days prior to public hearing.
All right, motion made by Christie to adopt, uh, with thirty days, uh, uh, let's get some discuss, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make one.
All right, Tommy?
Uh, number six with fifteen day notice on it.
Mr. Majors makes a motion, uh, for, uh, dot number six with fifteen days, uh, is there a second?
Second motion.
Mark Wilson seconds it, uh, discussion by any board member. Uh, comments by any member of the public? On the motion, uh, Jim?
Mr. Doyne?
Hi.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Hi.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Ms. Ains?
No.
Ms. Blick? Mr. Hayes?
Uh.
And Mr. Majors?
Hi.
All right, motion carries, uh, now, uh, I am, uh, suggesting subject to staff's comments uh, that we have a motion to, uh, uh, refer this, uh, as, as, as it, as it has been amended uh, to.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have a few other, just some tiki things.
Okay, uh, well, let me, let me, let me go ahead and just, you know, say this and then, then we can go on. I'll recognize you, Christie.
Okay.
Uh, but what my motion was requesting is that we, uh, hold the language, uh, in this item. Not hold it, that we recommend this item, uh, to be, uh, on the agenda for the next, uh, commission meeting. Uh, and that, uh, that we, uh, call a public hearing to be held prior to uh, that, uh, uh, discussion on, on the, uh, language in this, uh, uh, that we've decided today and in, uh, the, uh, uh, the subdivision ordinance, uh, uh, the recommendations for the subdivision ordinance. All right, Christie, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, real quick, um, there is a missed edit on number eight in proof of notice filed. It's got four and six. If that four can be stricken.
All right, say that again, Christie?
On item number eight?
I got that.
It says, um, proof of notice is to be filed with staff of the Department of Planning and Development at least four, six days. So the, the four just needs to be edited out.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, uh, with, without objection, that edit will take place. Is there any objection? All right, so, so, so done, so.
Okay, yay.
Hey, you got a roll.
I got one.
Okay, now that I have a, a motion, as I indicated a little bit earlier, that, uh, that we refer this language, uh, to the, uh, uh, commission meeting in, uh, March and that prior to that commission meeting, we have a public hearing on this language, uh, affording the public an opportunity, uh, to comment.
I would like to make that motion, but I do have a couple other little things.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, um, I wanted to make a syntax correction on three A and B. There are three commas that probably could be removed for clarity. I'm sorry, I was.
That's okay, that's okay, Christie, uh.
Okay. And on number three A, there, there's a comma after record. Remove that, a comma after company, remove that before the parentheses and remove the comma after applicant in that parentheses. And that, there's the same situation on B. I don't know if Jim, you can see that probably.
So we remove the ca- uh, comma after records?
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, remove the comment after abstract company.
Yeah.
Uh, and then remove the comment, comma after the word applicant.
Yeah, and that's the same situation in B.
Okay, I will, uh, I'll make those changes and then I'll run it by the grammar checker and make sure.
Okay.
Okay, without objection, uh, on Christie's, uh, grammatical, uh, comment, uh, we'll go ahead and ask Jim to do that. Anything else, Christie?
Okay, um, I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I know we need to get on to the next thing, but let me just say, on number seven, um, the item number seven, uh, last time we talked about staff not keeping a database. But it really, if it could be done, it, it can be done very easily if, if you have a form on the website and you can collect that uh, through a database. I'll be happy to assist staff or, or the website administrator. I've done that before on how to do that. It's very easy, but I don't see how you can't do that, uh, because people don't know. I- if they don't know what's happening, how can they request to be alerted? It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I was just hoping that maybe staff could keep an easy database with zip code. And, um, whenever there's an application that comes up in that area, they could look up zip code and see who has previously submitted that they wanted to be alerted.
We do have a list that we, we keep for notification, uh.
Oh, you do have a database?
It's not a really thorough, I mean, it's, it's a database, but it's basically a mailing list that we include when we mail out our notices and if they are willing to provide their email, then we can, we can send it by email.
Jim, let me ask, as I understand it, uh, you know, you, you really like, uh, Roland, somebody in Roland, uh, says they want to be on notification or want to be notified. They would be notified for something that may happen in Sherwood or out in the rural area in North Plasky County. Is that right or wrong?
That is, that is correct.
So Christie, what, what I understand is that anybody that wants to receive notices about anything that goes on within the county, they may not be geographically specific uh, within the county, but they would receive notices, uh, that, you know, that they would, uh, learn uh, about anything that's going on in the county and, and would then have to, you know, geographically, uh, exclude it or include it.
Okay, so everybody, it's just gonna be a blanket email to everybody that ha- that Jim has on file.
Is that right, Jim?
That is correct.
That's fine.
We, we have a raised hand here, some, someone might to be addressed.
Okay.
I'm just, I just.
Else, Christie?
Oh, I, yes, I definitely want Patty to make a comment. Um, she has her hand raised there. I have one more item.
Okay, go. Well, Patty, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to say that as a public member of the public, I wouldn't mind going through emails um, to see the ones that apply to my area as opposed to having to go through websites and log on to your website to try to figure out what's going on. I would appreciate that and I bet a lot of other people would too. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Christie, you got?
Okay, I, I just have one more thing. Um, on item eight A, the certified mail receipt stamped by the post office in the list. My original language said, if using certified mail return receipt method, the green PS Form three eight one one and white certified mail receipt, PS Form thirty-eight hundred proof of mailing stamped by the post office. So I just want to make sure, uh, do we need to make that, do we need to return it back to my original language? Or are the certified mail receipts, is it assumed that any of the green return, uh, receipts that are returned will, will be included as part of that? Because the way we have it voted now with the fifteen day, um, notification, that doesn't give enough time for all those receipts to come in, and that's one of the problems I had with the thirty days. Is that this new process is not being given enough time for all those receipts to come in that could come in, so it's gonna come after the fact. Um, anyway, I just want to make sure that, uh, what, what, why was my language removed? For one thing, I, I, I don't understand why it was by staff. Maybe they can explain that.
F, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, it's been through so many iterations, I, I really couldn't answer that. That's, uh, I mean, we, we tried to, tried to remove a lot of the editorial comments from previous versions and I can't remember for sure if that was one of the editorial comments or what it was.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I had concerns about getting, um, for lack of the term, better term, positive, you know, receipt back to the, to the planning department before they can act. I, I, I think certified mail notice is reasonable, but and return receipt request, we did discuss this at the last meeting, but you know, some people don't respond and, and that, that's, that's an untenable situation for us to require receipt of their response. Uh, I mean, the receipt, return receipt on, on every deal. I don't think that's.
So what, excuse me, Mark, Christie, what you're saying is that you want to have a receipt returned?
Well, we've already voted on that. There's gonna be a, a return receipt requested. And the, the person will, the, the applicant will receive back, uh, there's a fifteen day process. And, um, and in that process, if somebody does not respond, they get back their letter and, uh, a log of what was tried. So, uh, with this list that we're, we have here, I just wanted to make sure that we have in there for sure that anything that they return, anything that's been returned, any green forms that have been returned, we want those. See, I want to see them.
It's my, it's my assumption that those are part of the, would be part of the public record. Uh, we're not requiring, uh, them to be returned in order for it to be valid, as I understand it. We're just gonna make those receipts available for anybody that wants to take a look at them. Is that what you're saying, Christie?
Yeah, uh, I, I thought that, that the applicant would return those to the staff.
Well, so, so, well, oh, right, okay, well, that.
And that we could see those as the planning board, that, uh, you know, what percentage has been received back. I think it's good data to have. Why would we reject data? I think, I think it's good to have data. We can even use it to improve processes. So, um, that, that's why I was just making a point about making sure that we also got the green form back because that's what we asked them to do. And is that what's assumed here? Are we assuming that they're going to return the green forms also?
Uh, you know, uh, I, I'm going to speak for myself. I think that if it's not clearly in writing, uh, it, 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 the commission, uh, needs to make that decision. Uh, I don't know that I see it unless somebody can point it out that it's clear.
Another, another issue is that, I'm sorry, is that sometimes people are going to use a walk around and they may not use the certified mail. So my original language said, if using certified mail return receipt method. So the way this is written is that they have to include that. Well, maybe they don't use that method. Maybe they're going to use walk around. So I feel like it's important to be very clear. And so I, I would recommend adding back my language. It, it's not going to hurt anybody. It's just making it clearer. Um, so it, it seems very mild what I'm asking for.
Well, let me, let me ask this, uh, you know, under, under C, it says list of owners notified. Uh, and, uh, you know, you could include, uh, I mean, if you want to make it clear, uh, unless somebody has any better idea, uh, to add, uh, you know, the, uh, uh, the source documents for the, uh, uh, notification of the owners. I don't know, I mean.
I think the list of owners notified might be, um, from the walk around method for one thing. And, and that they just have to provide a list that they, of the, of the people they sent it to. Is, am I, I mean, staff is going to have to probably step in here and.
What would staff like on something like this? Uh, Van or, uh, Jim?
We would like to see the li- if there is a walk around, we would like to see, and this is what we have gotten in the past. Uh, they have actually provided the, the form that's included in the subdivision application that has the, the people they've notified by walk around with a signature. And we, we, we've done that and accepted that in the past, and that would be fine if it was added to this.
Well, where would you like, I mean, what you're after, Christie, is to have a copy of the return receipts.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Whatever is returned, I, I would like to have a copy of it.
Mr. Chairman, let's modify A to say a copy of any certified mail receipt stamped by the post office. And then under C, a list of owners notified by a walk around process. And then D.
I like Jim's simplicity.
Okay.
He always.
God bless him.
For that.
God bless you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
He has to do.
Make sure that's in the notes.
All right, uh, is there, if there's any objection to that rewording, uh, let me, uh, ask them to speak now or forever hold your peace.
Would you mind just, would you mind just, uh, Jim saying that, just summarizing it, because there was a lot of back and forth and added and subtraction. It got muddled.
I'll read the entire eight, uh.
Great, thank you.
Proof of notice is to be filed with the staff of the Department of Planning and Development at least six days prior to the public hearing and shall include copies of any certified mail receipts stamped by the post office. The certified listing of recorded property owners provided by an abstract company or the list of property owners provided by the planning department. See a list of owners notified by any walk around process and the a copy of the completed public meeting notice and signed affidavit.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anybody, or is everybody clear on, on that wording? I think, well, let's just go ahead and do it by, you know, by motion and vote. Uh, is there a motion that we adopt that language?
I make a motion to adopt that language.
All right, is there a second?
No, we didn't. I'm sorry, we, just for number eight is what.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
All right.
I'll second, um, Ms. Eames' motion.
I, 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 I'll take Patricia's making the motion and, uh, Mark is seconding.
No, 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 no. Christie made the motion.
That's right, Christie, I'm sorry. Christie made the motion and Patricia seconded.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
It's a great motion, I can't take credit for it.
Discussion, discussion on the motion. Jim?
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Blick?
Yes.
Ms. Eames?
Hi.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Aye.
And Mr. Doyne?
Aye.
Okay, now, uh, uh, I'll open up for a motion to adopt, uh, all of the language, uh, in, uh, this item, the proposed subdivision ordinance, uh, regarding notifications requirements, uh, and to recommend it to the, uh, next, uh, uh, the next meeting of the commission and prior to that, uh, have a public hearing, uh, for, uh, input from the public. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, Christie, is there a second?
Okay, I, I need to be clear on what the motion is. I'm sorry.
All right, the, the motion, uh, is to now adopt the entire language reflected in, uh, in the, uh, uh, in the, uh.
One, one point one, you're right.
I'm sorry, yeah, uh, you know, the one, you know, uh, section one point one O and title notice requirements to adopt all the language, uh, that is, uh, in that section as we have amended it.
Okay. Uh, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mark seconds it. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Uh, on the motion, uh, Jim?
Mr. Doyne?
Aye.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Eames?
Aye.
Ms. Blick?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
And Mr. Majors?
Aye.
Okay, touchdown. Uh, so we'll recommend this to the, uh, uh, well, we'll, we'll discuss it next board meeting for, for final adoption, uh, subsequent to the public hearing. Uh, now let's go to the last item, uh, uh, well, not the last item, but the last item in other business, consideration of final draft resolution prepared by the land use plan subcommittee. Uh, you know, I usually I'll, I'll open it with staff, so, you know, we'll go ahead and do that. Does staff have any comments on this before I let Christie, uh, make the motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the staff is supportive of, of resolution after it.
Okay, uh, Christie, I'm going to open it for you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, about the, um, change to notification, I want to thank my fellow colleagues on going through that. I know that was a tough process and I appreciate you all very much. Um, I think it's going to be a great upgrade. Um, I didn't get everything I wanted, but, oh, I, I'm, I think that, um, I think that it's a great upgrade to the current process and I appreciate you all. Thank you. And I also want to thank John Killingsworth for his presentation. I know he spent hours on that. And, um, I wish that we, you know, had millions of John Killingsworths who take part like that to that level and care that much, as well as all the others that have shown up today. I want to thank all of them, um, for taking time out. Um, so about the land use draft, uh, just briefly, last October twenty sixth, I made a motion to create a special committee for, with the purpose of drafting a report to protect the agricultural and rural areas of Blasky County and present its recommendations to the board, no later than a date to be determined by the chairman. The motion was passed unanimously by the board and subsequently Kara, Mayor Hayes, Eric, as ex officio, and I have had three meetings to discuss a draft resolution that the staff had sent to us on November twelfth last year, which broadened our scope and, uh, to consider a countywide land use plan. Therefore, before you today is the final draft submitted for your approval. The land use plan special committee accepted input from the public and we had great discussions to get it to this version that we all agreed upon. If we move to accept this final draft today, then the resolution in final form will be placed on our full board agenda in March, as I understand, for a public hearing. And afterwards, we will seek sponsors from the quorum court to be placed hopefully on their April agenda for final passage. I, I do want to suggest that we remove one of the public hearing dates in this final draft, since I think only one would be necessary. Um, it's Mr. McLendon, uh, I think he might have mentioned that. Uh, we have two, we have it placed for two public hearings, um, where this will be read. And I request that only one be, be necessary. Mr. McLendon?
Uh, miss, miss, Mr. Chairman, Mad, uh, Committee Chairman.
Yeah.
Their person, uh, uh, it does, I don't think it really matters at this point because, uh, if we have the public hearing in March as anticipated, then when we send it on to the quorum court, it'll only have one space in there for that public hearing was held. And if we happen to do two, we'll put that in there. So we'll, we'll amend whatever we have at the public hearing, if that's the final decision of the board is to have only one public hearing, then we'll, we'll do it, or we can have it, we can take it out before we get there, if that's what you want to do.
Based on, based on what, uh, you know, that can be a decision, uh, 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 Christie, why don't we just leave that as a decision for the, for the March meeting as to whether they have one or two?
Okay, I.
We'll just leave those blank and then to the extent that we have one and that's fine, we'll just put one date in there to the extent we have two, you know, we'll fill it up, but.
Okay.
I, 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 I would have a tendency to agree with you.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'm just, this resolution, just to let the board members know, is it's simply asking the quorum court's blessing, uh, with the hope of provided resources so that we may begin a countywide land use study, which would include how best to protect the agricultural, rural and natural areas. Um, using the aforementioned October motion as our guide, I anticipate that the special committee, not the full board, will work with any consultants on the study. And once completed, we will be, bring before you, the full board, a final plan with recommendations for your consideration. And, um, so my, my stated motion was that I had moved that this body create an ad hoc or special committee with the purpose of drafting a report to the, to protect the agricultural and rural areas of Blasky County, present its recommendations to you all, no later than a date to be determined by the chair. So, um, I, I don't know how that will play out, but I just wanted to introduce what we've done and put it before you, and I hope that you like it and that you will approve it so that we can have it for public hearing next month. Thank you.
Okay, now, do you want to make a motion that we adopt this resolution, uh?
I would.
And have a public hearing on the resolution at the next March meeting, uh, and that, uh, that, uh, so we'll fill in one blank, uh, that the first public hearing, assuming that, that you're, you know, your motion is this and that it's adopted, uh, that we have a public hearing on, whatever the date is. What's the date, uh, Van of the next, uh, uh, commission meeting?
Uh, you're on mute, Mr. McLendon.
Twenty second.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and put the twenty second of March, uh, in there and then we can decide whether to have another public hearing or just leave it, uh, uh, there at the, uh, at the next commission meeting. So we'll have, uh, the twenty second of March, uh, two thousand twenty two.
All right, well, I make a motion that, um, we approved this land use resolution and throws it on our, as written, and place it on our docket for, uh, March.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Okay, uh, uh, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion. This is Patricia Blick.
Yeah, Patricia Blick, uh, seconds Christie, uh, uh, Eames makes a motion, uh, discussion by the board. No discussion? Any quick comments? Uh, oh, Tommy, I mean, uh, yeah, Tommy Majors?
Yes, sir. Uh, so what we're doing here is planning zoning for the non-incorporated area.
Actually, what we're doing is we're asking the quorum court to, uh, create or to, uh, adopt a countywide land use plan. Uh, and this is the first step in the process. We don't have the resources to do it ourselves, so the quorum court will need to make a decision whether they think that a countywide land use plan is, is prudent or appropriate. And, uh, and then, uh, also, also, uh, uh, whether or not, or how to do it. Uh, and so that's basically what I think this resolution does, you know, subject to, uh, us, uh, uh, agreeing at the next board meeting, an extra mission meeting, uh, and, uh, and then, uh, uh, sending that to the, uh, quorum court after the public hearing.
Uh, I haven't had an opportunity to really look at this document here. Uh, if we're gonna, oh, if all we're voting on is to bring it up in the March meeting to look at further, then yes, I could, I'd go along with that. Is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, basically, that's what we're doing. Uh, you know, you know, we're, we're recommending that we have a public hearing on this resolution and that, uh, the next meeting, uh, subject to, uh, the public hearing that we vote then to recommend it to the.
Mr. Chairman, that's not my understand, my understanding is that we're, with this resolution, if we approve this rev- resolution, we're recommending to the quorum court that they adopt a countywide land use plan.
Well, so see, we're doing this prior to a public hearing, so, you know, we really, uh, staff can comment on this, but I think that, you know, that we need to have a public hearing before we actually send it to the quorum court. Van?
Yeah, there, there will be another vote on this.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you'll vote on it at the March meeting if you so choose after your public hearing.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, we'll vote on it in March as to whether to send it to the quorum court.
That's correct. After the public hearing, we need to, we need to make sure that the public has a, another opportunity to, uh, uh, comment on this resolution.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say something, um, uh, as the way I understand it also from what Mr. McLendon explained was this is, uh, to sort of kick off the process to, um, you know, as a, as a board, we can do our own land use plan from what I heard from the county attorney. We don't have to ask the quorum court. We can do it ourselves.
Well, yeah, and, and I, I'm not going to argue with the county attorney, but the one thing that we don't have, if, if I understand correctly, is the resources to
Right.
do the kind of, uh, job that we would feel, uh, worthwhile to recommend to the quorum court, so.
Right, exactly. And, and that's what I was explaining. And so sending it to the quorum court, um, kicks this off and because, uh, Arkansas code annotated, uh, dictates that the, the planning board, that's our task, is to come up with plans. I fully expect that they'll kick it back to the planning board and say, okay, go to it. And it, and I'm, I'm assuming that that's what's going to happen and if they won't form their own task force. I, I don't know that they would do that. I don't know what they're going to do, but I'm assuming they're going to kick it back to us and then we will begin our study.
Right. Uh, you know, that, to me, I'd be honest with you, if, if the quorum court does not want to provide us with resources, uh, I would be very, uh, concerned about, you know, on our own initiative without, you know, having any kind of professional assistance of moving forward with trying to, uh, pursue a countywide plan, but that, that, that's something that, you know, is for another time. Okay, uh, we do have, um, a motion, uh, and a second, if I'm not mistaken, that we recommend this resolution, uh, to the quorum court subsequent, subsequent to a, uh, input by the public at the next meeting. Um, Jim, on the motion?
Mr. Majors?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Blick?
Yes.
Ms. Eames?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Boyd Connors?
Aye.
And Mr. Doyne?
Aye.
All right, I think the motion carries. Uh, now we're into, and let's, uh, let me just go ahead before we go to chairman communications and staff communications and chairman. Uh, you know, i- if, if any member of the public is out there that wants to make a quick comment on the substance. the substance, any, any item in this, uh, uh, that we've discussed, I'd like to open it, but open it for just a brief time. Uh, if anyone wants to make a quick comment, please, uh, acknowledge by, uh, by stating your name. Not hearing any, uh, there's no more, no further chairman communications, uh, staff?
No further comment.
No further comment from, uh, Van, Jim, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, board member Sam Kaufman has tendered his resignation and just wanted to make that, uh, known for the public record.
Okay, that's, that's acknowledged. Uh, I'm assuming that we don't take any action on that, that that, uh, will be done to replace that person by, uh, the, uh, county judge with confirmation to quorum court?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, uh, number, uh, lumber, uh, gosh, uh, H. You know, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Mark's motion to adjourn is their second.
Second.
Second is, uh, Kara Boyd Connors. And, uh, let me thank, I also want to acknowledge what Christie said. I want to thank certainly the staff for the work they've done, uh, uh, Christie for leading the subcommittee uh, and for the members of the board, uh, for dealing with the various issues that we've dealt with today. Uh, next time, I hope our chairman will be back, uh, and, uh, look forward to handing the gavel back, uh, to Eric. Uh, and I also want to underline, uh, as Christie said, uh, the comments made by the public. Uh, John's efforts were duly acknowledged and certainly appreciated all of what he did uh, to, uh, help, uh, chronicle the, uh, the recommendation or at least the position that he was advocating. Uh, with that, on the motion to adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, you, you vote affirmative by leaving the meeting. How's that sound?
There we go.
Okay, y'all take care and have a good week.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.